There you go. Plug was out inside. Okay. August ninth, two thousand and sixteen. Town board meeting. All members present will know it will be here shortly.
Good morning for the court stenographers standpoint. I'm David Flynn, the town planning director. I wanted to just go over with the board the status of a number of zone change petitions that came in in two thousand and fifteen. And I compiled a list. I emailed it to you this morning. And does anyone need a copy?
I have one.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The, there are six items on the list. The first one is number six, Aldridge Realty. And that's the one on Lake Avenue in St. James. And if you don't mind, I'll just go over them case by case. So the first one is Aldridge Realty. They're petitioning the town to change the back of their property from central business to R ten. The planning department recommended denial. The planning board recommended approval. The town board had a hearing. The councilman McCarthy asked the planning department to come up with an alternative that would allow more use of the property by the business person, but protect the neighbors better than the current zoning protects them. And we actually came up with something that does that. We met with the applicant. He wasn't interested in it for a variety of reasons. We asked, or we suggested that he come back with an alternative verbally within a week or so. He had said that he wanted some alternative, but that the buffer would be something like thirteen feet or fifteen feet as opposed to ten. So from my perspective, I didn't think that helped the neighbors out any.
We currently have about forty feet. Do you know what I mean?
The, right now, the property is used as an abandoned home. So the buffer is enormous. It's huge. If someone came in today and built what they're entitled to build, the buffer would be forty-eight feet.
But I recall two people who live behind that parcel complained that their buffer would reduce to ten or eight feet.
Correct. The rezoning, if the town board rezones the property, it reduces the buffer from forty-eight feet to ten. So.
It seems to me if the applicant doesn't want to be cooperative, then we ought to deny it. I went to look at it. You were to offer an alternative, right?
The alternative was a great alternative. He got actually more yield on his building, a better parking lot, and a much cleaner look for the residents behind there with a nice buffer.
You all remember this, don't you?
So I hope.
And I would suggest we put it on, and I would vote to deny.
Well, it's up to the town board to be sure.
Yeah, of course.
You, I think we should, you said he's coming back. You give him, you called him. I see a note on the bottom here that you contacted him?
Not in the past two months or so. We met with him one day, and his attorney got back to me about a week later and just verbally said that they would be open to a certain layout, but the buffer was, as I recall, it was something like thirteen feet. It was only like three feet more than the minimum that would be required. And in all honesty, because of other reasons, it fell off my radar, and I guess it's off his radar. I would, I would say the best thing is just to give one more shot, just so that.
What, give, oh, the applicant one shot?
The applicant, the petitioner, another shot.
Come up with an alternative?
Right.
If he's not willing to make it, it's two things. If he's willing to cooperate and make something that's really nice for downtown St. James, which has probably got a forty to fifty percent vacancy right now, and because Lake Avenue, unfortunately, has moved up to twenty-five A, and you need a shot on there. A new building would be nice, but he's not gonna, if he's not gonna be cooperative to make something that's nice and protect the residents in the rear, you gotta deny it. But I think give him a shot before the next meeting, next two weeks, let David talk to him. If he doesn't get any cooperation, then he puts it on for a vote.
I was under the impression he was going to make out a parking lot.
Me too.
No, no. The application was a building that we heard.
This is by.
No, it was just a change of zone.
Yeah. That was for a building, I mean.
I don't recall the building. Okay.
Okay, just a sec.
Wait. Go ahead. You go ahead.
Okay, so I'll contact the applicant and see where they want to go with this. The second one is Elite Towers. This is the cell tower at a bar on Old Dock Road in Kings Park. You had a hearing. The planning department recommended denial, but the applicant had the right to go for variances to the BZA. They had a hearing, and the BZA apparently is not inclined to deny it because they're waiting for the secret process to be completed.
To deny the application for variance.
Correct. Right. So we're, when I say we, I mean you, you're the town board at this point. If you want to approve it, you're waiting for the BZA. I even think if you wanted to deny it, since it's at the BZA, it's probably wise to wait and see what they do. Because obviously, if you, if you wanted to deny it and you denied it before the BZA process is done, that would create complications.
Sure.
Yeah.
The third one is Dr. Mustafa. This is on the corner of New Highway and Comac Road. It's a house. He had his home occupation there. He is petitioning the town board to rezone his property from R ten to neighborhood business. The planning department and the planning board are recommending rezoning it to professional business. He's in favor of that. His attorney and he have said it to me at least three times in the past few months. You're waiting for secret on this, assuming that you want to approve it or that you're, you want to consider approving it. One of the reasons I wanted to go over with these with you is if there's no support for one or more of these, we should know because you don't want to have DEW spend time and the property owners spending time going through the secret process if it's all for naught.
Well, go back to Mustafa.
Right.
If he wants PB, professional business.
Well, it says NB on here.
Correct. That's what the petition is for.
Oh, it says NB here.
Correct. That's what the, that's what he petitioned. The planning department or the planning director and the planning board are recommending PB. His attorney, John Preslin, and he have told me at least three times that they're in favor of PB, that he's looking, he, meaning the doctor, is looking forward to submitting a site plan for an office.
Would that require a new hearing? Because it's PB instead of NB, or is it less zoning?
My understanding, I think it's a town attorney question. My understanding from the town attorney's office in the past is if the alternative that the town board might enact is less impacting to the neighbors or less impacting to the property owner, then no new hearing is required.
It would be, essentially the standard is, is there a material change in the application?
Is there a material change?
Well, I, to me, I think it sort of is. I mean, PB doesn't allow retail or restaurants or personal service or repair garages or filling stations or a number of other uses.
Where's that location?
Diagonally opposite the Hamlet.
Oh, okay. On that corner.
Correct. There's a Shell station, I think, on the southeast corner.
I think about forty years ago, there was an application for an office building there. It's the town board denied.
Well, I know there was one about eight years ago, or so, the town board denied, but that was for neighborhood business as well. That wasn't PB or OB.
So the decision is if everybody's in favor of PB, do you have to have a new hearing or not? And that's up to the town attorney to make that decision.
Yeah, so if we just get a copy of all the materials, we can look at it and get an answer to the town board.
Okay.
It's a medical building?
Well, right now, it's a house.
And it's to make it a medical?
Um, he wants to make it an office. I'm guessing that with the health department requirements, he probably not be able to make it medical. But that's up, that's a health department requirement, not a town.
I don't recall any residents speaking out against this.
There was a woman at the planning board meeting. I don't know if she showed up to the town board hearing.
I don't think so.
Okay. She was concerned about it.
Okay, so you're waiting for secret on that?
Correct. The fourth zone change is called TDG. This is on the south side of Jericho Turnpike in Comac. It's the hotel, I can't remember the new name, but it used to be Hilltop Motel, kind of near where McDonald's is, but on the south side of Jericho, using McDonald's as a landmark. It's a zone change from WSI and R ten to RMGA. They, they had both the planning board and, and town board hearings. At your hearing, I would characterize the public comment as not really opposed. I think it's fair to say that they were concerned and cautiously in favor of the rezoning.
I spoke to Howard. He told me that he's waiting for a redesign.
Okay.
So that would hold up the secret process.
Right. They had one building, and the zoning ordinance really does not permit garden apartments with more than sixteen units in a building. So the property owner redesigned it a couple of times to, to go down to sixteen unit buildings.
So David, they want to take down the existing, what is a Hilltop Motel?
Correct.
And put up an apartment complex with sixteen apartments?
Well, sixteen per building, the total.
So how many buildings?
Is, I'm not sure, maybe like eightish?
How much building?
How much land?
I don't remember. It's, but they're, it's, they're not going above what the density that's permitted. They were originally coming in with about a hundred and nineteen apartments.
Rentals?
Correct. And they were going, the last I remember, they were down to about one oh two, one oh five in that area.
So age restriction on those, on that application? I thought there was.
Not in the zoning ordinance, but they are going to self-impose an age restriction because the health department.
Waste water manager.
Yes, has a higher flow rate for open market apartments than does for elderly apartments.
We heard this.
Correct.
I remember that.
Right. About, I believe there were about three people who spoke.
But these are regular apartments, right? Not senior apartments?
Well, no, they're both. The zoning is, is not for senior apartments. The zoning is for general.
Yes.
But the property owner has said many times that they need to make it senior in order to get the density they want, in order for the health department to approve the density that they want.
Nothing for young children.
Then we should have a new hearing.
I don't think so. It's RMGA, there's, there is nothing, when they came to you, they were proposing about a hundred and five apartments. There's no change. What they're proposing isn't different from what was at the hearing. I mean, maybe a different way of wording it is on their own motion, they're being more restrictive than what the zoning requires.
What did the planning board say about that?
They recommended approval subject to the age restriction.
So they're asking for the age restriction?
Correct. Well, I don't know if the word is asking for, they don't need it. They're volunteering the information. They're telling us that, that if the town changes the zoning for garden apartments, they intend to make it age restricted in order to get the density they want.
That's the applicant, but the planning board also.
The planning board recommended it, yes.
They recommended the over fifty-five?
Correct.
Comac?
So that means they're not going to approve it without that?
Well, then they won't approve it. They're only recommending that.
The planning board's role is over at this point. They made the recommendation. So Carmax, this one's a little more recent. You had a hearing, I believe, the same night as the TDG one. And this is the Smithtown Concrete Property, and they're petitioning for you to change the zoning from light industry to wholesale and service industry so they could build their car dealership, which is a used car dealership. The planning board and the planning department recommended approval, basically subject to one significant condition. There are other conditions, but the only significant one is, is that they use, that the rezoning be subject to them connecting to the traffic signal at the senior citizen center unless the board determines, which I presume is based on expert information, but unless the, this board determines that it's safer to use Montclair Avenue and Arthur Drive.
So when you say connecting to?
To build a curb cut.
They want a curb cut that?
They don't want the curb cut. We are recommending the curb cut.
Oh, they don't want the curb cut.
We're, we're concerned about safety if they don't use the signalized intersection that according to normal textbook theory, it would be more hazardous to not use the signalized intersection.
Well, wouldn't that be a site plan issue?
Yes. Yeah, I, no problem if the town board waits to resolve this. The only thing is, is the applicant should sort of know, the reason we recommend it is the applicant should sort of know upfront because if the zoning occurs, if the town board changes the zoning, and then, say, six months later says, we want you to connect to a curb cut, then say, well, we already bought the property and you didn't tell us you wanted that, and that's a deal breaker. So the idea is to try to let them know beforehand, at least, at least what I was thinking, so they're not surprised.
So is there an argument against them using a, like?
Their, their argument, and I, I understand it, and I agree with it, and if I were them, I'd say the same thing, is the driveway that they would have to construct to the traffic signal would severely reduce the amount of cars that you can see from Middle Country Road, their, their display. It would cut into the middle of their display. There's no question it would do that. So then the question becomes safety versus the efficacy of their design. And I, I admit, I don't have proof that it's more dangerous to do it the way they do, but the normal stuff that engineers tell us day in and day out is it's safer to use a traffic signal.
What does the traffic engineer say?
I'm not sure, Pete.
Yeah, he was in agreement, and he thought there was some flaws.
Our traffic engineer, as opposed to DOT, their traffic engineer.
What was he saying? Why don't you come up here sort of with me?
Yeah, Mitch Crowley was basically in agreement that it would be safer to use the, the traffic signal. He thought there were a couple flaws in their traffic study and that we should pursue this for now. Also, we haven't heard from New York State DOT, and it's their road.
It's their road.
So right now, we kind of need to see what DOT wants to do. DOT will be copied on the site plan when it gets to that stage, if it gets to that stage, but right now, DOT has not been involved with this.
They were staying aloof.
Well, they normally don't get involved in zone changes unless the petitioner contacts them directly to try to get their support on something. But the town, the, you know, the way New York State law works is DOT doesn't get involved unless someone that wants to do work on a state highway. And then they need a state work permit, a highway work permit, and that triggers the whole review. No one's applying, it's premature to apply for a work permit right now.
But isn't that like the same thing? Doesn't this potential new owner want to know ahead of time if DOT says to them, no, you have to do it this way? And it's a deal breaker, like you said? I mean, it sounds to me like it's something they should be doing. Not that that's our business, but.
My experience is DOT usually doesn't say you have to.
DOT won't say you have to on this.
No.
Because if they're in and they're out, it's on town roads, not on a state road. They're, they're not even going to be involved in it. They love the idea they're not getting a curb cut. That's how it's going to play out. And do we want to lose the application? That's where it comes to. They said if they have to come out to that traffic light, they're gone. Do you want to lose the application and fixing that derelict site, or do you want to leave it derelict forever? That's what's going to happen.
Is that what they said to you guys?
Yeah, I mean, if you remember the Sonic application, they didn't want new access points on Middle Country Road.
Right.
DOT was saying access Alexander Avenue because it had the signalized intersection.
They meaning DOT didn't want the curb.
They don't want them. So they'll be out of it. You have nothing on, they won't even, they'll be out of it completely. The only part they'll be involved in is curb construction and safety things when you build a site.
If we approved the zone change, they have to submit a site plan, right?
Correct.
So the site plan will have to be consistent with the, with the DOT wants. But you said Carmax doesn't want that.
Well, DOT, as Tom said, DOT doesn't normally mandate something like this. They may have given opinion, and they're, they're pretty reluctant to get involved in land use.
No, I know that from the gas station on, on.
On the road, okay. Also, the Hamlet over in St. James on the bypass. They're, they're normally reluctant, land use is a local issue. They're involved in traffic or highway safety and highway capacity and stuff like that. So they, they tend not to be pushy about it.
So the decision, as far as the traffic signal, would be more a town, a Smithtown decision?
Well, that's when you go into it. If you start, and then if we say we want to open up a curb cut to the traffic light, then the DOT comes in and might say, okay, we're happy with it, or we don't want that curb cut. And then we could restrict the right turns only out of the, possibly out of the facility, and maybe you don't need the traffic light.
And you're saying the owner said if they have to use the traffic light?
They're returning. They said, I'm not.
They're out.
Their, their contract is all the way through cycling. They don't, anything they don't like, they're out, they're gone, and it just stays an old concrete yard for the next hundred years.
So then it seems like the decision that has to be made is curb light or no light? That seems like the bottom line.
And the traffic director, he's, he's.
Yeah, well, I make a workaround all that.
Did he say that they should be using the traffic light?
Mitch, he's on the fence. He says, if you restrict, do right, right turn restrictions, you're not crossing across Jericho, it could be some mediating areas where it might, we'll work without it.
Okay, so where do the town boards know here?
It's approval or deny it the way it is right now. We're not voting on a site plan.
Oh, okay. They still have to go through site plan.
But that's after.
Right. So in order to move this along, you have to vote yes and then wait for the site plan, otherwise you kill, you kill it right here.
Correct.
Yeah.
I'm not looking to kill it right now.
I think another important note, too, was we were worried about the impact on Montclair Avenue. They had all customers and employees accessing off of the side street of Montclair Avenue. They claimed on the record that they would all exit out onto Middle Country Road, being that everything we went through with, to the north with the chicane and the residents up there, we didn't want to encourage it, so that was another reason for the signal.
They had multiple meetings with the people on Montclair Road, and I don't, I don't even remember if anybody on Montclair Road even came to the hearing.
I think they're in support now.
Yeah, yeah. There's, one woman was in favor.
One woman?
Well, I think she normally was opposed to this stuff in the past. I don't know her name.
Mrs. McGovern.
Patricia McGovern.
I don't really want us to die now.
Yeah, it's in secret anyway. It's not, it doesn't, it's finished, secret process.
And what's Artis?
If you don't mind, I'm going to take away from this. The town board is in favor of approving it without that condition.
Well, I'm not going to poll the board, but I would suspect they are.
Yeah, the same thing here. I'm just, my sense is, is the board doesn't want to lose this. Okay. The next one is Artis. That's a special exception for senior, for assisted living on the north side of Jericho Turnpike, just east of the, of Kings Park Road, basically. You're waiting for secret on that.
Where is that exactly?
It's also a needed variances.
Directly opposite TDG?
Oh, not quite directly, but almost, like a little offset from the Hilltop Motel. A little bit to the west, but on the other side of Jericho.
East of North Gate Shopping Center.
Next to North Gate. East of, east of North Gate.
Shopping Center, right.
Oh, we've had that already, okay.
Yeah, you had a hearing. And they also are applied to the BZA for about three or four variances, and that's pending.
Are they waiting for us or are we waiting for them?
They're both waiting for secret.
Okay.
They're both waiting for secret.
I spoke to Howard, but he, this morning, he mentioned that he's even waiting for something or other.
That's typical. I mean, usually the DEW gets back to people and then waits for them.
How, how long typically does it take from this application, when they apply, they start the secret? How long does it usually take for them to get their answer?
Well, DEW normally won't start secret till after the town board's hearing because of the, that's the reason for discussing this actually.
All right, and then, and then we say start.
And then when they start, I'd say roughly a half year?
A half a year?
I don't think it's a half year or longer. It used to be. I think they're a lot quicker now.
Three months.
But it depends on applicants resumils.
Right.
And if they're waiting for anything, it's up in the engineers.
And the nature of something might have potential significant impacts, so that may, why it averages as a half year? If it's a, if it's straightforward, it might be more like three months.
So the bottom line is we're not going to dispose of it any, until we wait for the secrets.
Correct, except for the first one. I'll get in touch with the applicant's attorney and see if he's willing to come up with a revision that would be helpful to the people who live near it.
And I'm sorry, David, and I missed that because I got stuck. That Lake Avenue one, is that supposed to be, they want to put up a building, it's supposed to be a professional building, or does it open it up to anything else?
It's, basically, retail is what they're thinking of.
Okay, and just question.
But let's just say if you approve the zone change, and there's no market for retail because of all the vacancies, if they could do office, the restaurant.
Restaurant, there's water, no sewer capacity.
And under the zoning, all kinds of things are permitted in the secret.
You can put a gas station?
Excuse me?
Put a gas station, too?
Yes, well, it's a subject to a special exception, but.
But then we would have to approve anyway.
Well, we would restrict the gas station if you approved the zone change.
You could.
We would say restriction of gas stations at site.
Has anybody asked the applicant what he intends?
Yes, yeah, retail is his intent.
Oh, we asked him this, actually.
Basically, it's retail.
Well, he had no, he didn't know.
The site is too expensive.
Yes. The store, she.
One or two floors?
Right. It's looking at forty-five hundred square feet, four thousand square feet in that area.
Okay. So we can't take any action till we hear from secret department?
That is.
Maybe you could send this list over to DEW and ask them to reply to us if any secrets will be completed.
Okay, I'll do that. Sure. That's it.
Okay, thank you, David. Anybody have anything to say?
Thanks, Dave.
The site plan?
I have site plans. Do you need me for anything?
No, thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Want to stick around?
Site plan?
Sure. You're taking it home, you.
It didn't look right, did it?
For a ride down the stairs?
Square peg didn't fit in a round hole.
This is Peter Hans from the planning department. I have four site plans for the board to consider acting as the board's site plan review this afternoon. The first one's called KP Associates. This is located at the southeast corner of Pulaski Road and Townline Road, recommending approval with three conditions, that they obtain necessary permits. Basically, I'll just kind of reduce the site plan up here, but it's kind of, it's a vacant sand pit. It was once a concrete manufacturing plant located at, as I said, Pulaski and Townline. Pulaski's a county road, county DPW does not want any access. The proposal, there's no proposed use right now. New York State DEC is mandating that the site be regraded and some material be removed. They have a consent order. Matt's very familiar with the, with the project. So DEC has been looking to have this site remediated, and before they could get to work on the site, they needed site plan approval. There's no vegetation removal, and as I said, we're recommending approval with these three conditions. Um, the applicant has agreed to these three conditions and, and is eager to actually get the site remediated.
So what are they doing?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Yeah, when it's all said and done, it'll be a flat, uh, graded vacant piece of land that will be ready for redevelopment, but that would be subject to reapprovals.
What's the zoning in that piece?
Um, I'm sorry, it's LI, Light Industrial. Directly to the east is the Dejana site. Um, I know Dejana's looking to expand onto this property, but that's a separate zone change application.
Right.
Where is Dejana on that map?
This is their building and they've acquired this piece of property.
And so the applicant here?
The applicant for this property is here. But like I said, at this time, the proposal is only to remediate the soil and grade it. It will be left vacant with no uses of the property. Um, and that's actually the third condition. Site plan approval is to facilitate the regrading of the site and removal of contaminated soil as required by New York State DEC. No use of the site for any purpose shall be permitted without further approval from the board of site plan review. We didn't want it to get cleaned up and then outdoor storage or something else occurs on the site.
Okay.
I'm just curious, Peter, what, what is that, is that water across the street?
That's a slump of recharge basin.
Oh, okay, all right.
County recharge basin. And you have the railroad tracks here.
The applicant does want to use this for something.
Eventually.
He would like to clean it up and I think be able to sell it.
Oh.
I mean, is that correct?
Sell it, uh, use it for, uh, whoever wants to do any kind of a building on it or change the building.
Order of consent from DC to clean it up, so.
Okay.
Um, next, Tom.
No problem.
You're, we are recommending approval?
We are.
Okay.
Uh, the next application is a telecommunication application. This is Verizon Wireless at Adams Avenue. It's a proposed installation of four roof mounted antennas. They went to the planning board, received approval. Our only condition of approval is that they can get the necessary permits. Um, the site's located at the corner of Adams and Commerce in the center of the industrial park. There's a, a shopping center. They're going to put some rooftop antenna panels on that. They're in agreement with the conditions and need the secrets, uh, today as well. The third application is two forty Vanderbilt Motor Parkway. Um, this is a, an office warehouse industrial building located at two forty Vanderbilt Motor Parkway, east of Adams. Um, they're legalizing, uh, a parking expansion that occurred. It's, uh, highlighted in that area. Um, the, that's the only subject of this application is to legalize the parking lot. Um, if it was proposed, we could have handled it as a site plan exemption, but because it is a legalization, we're doing it as a site plan. It should be noted that they did recently go to the board of zoning appeals. They are going to be doing a change of use to put in a gym for Planet Fitness in this building. Um, the change of use, we will be able to handle as a site plan exemption separately. But there was, uh, a few issues between the property owner and the proposed tenant as to who was responsible for what, so that's why this, uh, project's broken up the way it is. Uh, we're recommending approval with the three conditions, uh, necessary permits. Uh, they gotta do some landscaping there and, uh, bring some lighting into conformity. As I said, everything's pretty much there. It just needs to be cleaned up a little bit. Anybody?
Nope.
Uh, the last application is at PJ Venture.
Okay, yeah, good.
Um, this is for a new four thousand three hundred eighty square foot retail building. Um, we're recommending approval with three conditions, that they get the necessary permits, um, that a temporary construction easement, um, for the proposed regrading on the adjacent parcel to the south be provided and that they do some minor modifications to the landscaping. Um, Mr. Baker, uh, is in the process of constructing this building. I believe the proposed tenant is Sleepies. Sleepies is looking, they're currently in the building. On the opposite, across the street on the site, um, I believe Home Goods is looking to expand into that space, so he's providing new space for Sleepies to keep the tenant here. There was a building here maybe fifteen years ago. Uh, it was a daycare center, so the building was removed. Uh, the site was, uh, regraded, so now we're merely putting a building back on the site.
So Home Goods will be larger and Sleepies has another place?
Correct, Tom. I don't want to speak out of line.
Yeah, there was a building in it. Uh, the new building will be smaller. The other one was ten thousand feet.
Now, but the, the current Sleepies space, one of your existing tenants-
Oh, yes. Will it become smaller?
Larger. Oh, larger?
The, the Sleepies space, I'll be about to say, just in a minute.
But what about Home, the new building?
Who's going into Sleepies space?
Um, five below.
Wow, okay. A different retail tenant, five below?
What is that?
I don't know.
Never heard of it.
Another retailer, you know, small items.
I like stores.
Well, we don't approve businesses, we approve uses, so it's retail space. We're providing, uh, additional retail space on the site. And we're recommending approval of these four site plans.
All the applicants have agreed to the conditions?
Yes.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Five under.
Mr., do you have anything?
I have one litigation.
Okay, anybody have anything?
No, I'm good.
Any on the side? All good? I'll move to go into executive session.
I'm looking second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Go ahead.
I'll move to close the executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll move to close the town board meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.